Great to be board meeting, West Valley School District, March 10, 2025. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during that agenda item by the chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of meeting. Citizens act to identify themselves or proceed to make comments as freely as the subject permits. Basic rules of decorum are invoked at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when appropriate, including when statements are out of order to lengthy, which personal privacy rights are abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum. Should we stand for the flag? I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes, to over the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I opposed. Yes. Um. Check and see if there's any other participation.
No public comment.
So who go on to the informational items? Do we have a report from the West Valley Teachers Organization? Nope. Okay, how about the West Valley Teachers Organization meeting?
Just that we're continuing with negotiation, we meet again on Wednesday.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, so for candidates for the board.
So I wanted to let you know that we're looking at staffing for next year. This is the time where the hiring season starts for schools in the area. Right now, we have special acquisition that's open out there. It did close in-house today a few minutes ago. So we'll see how we want to handle that. And then there's also an eighth grade ELA position that's open in-house as well. And then there might be a couple more depending on how some cards fall in addition to those two. Yeah, so gonna hear about the grading policy today from Nicole. There's been a lot of work on that. Just wanted to highlight that it took a team effort to do that, took a lot of time and they should be very proud of that. It was really, really cool. The legislative updates I keep looking on the report you guys got are encouraging to me. I think we're at the halfway point. And so looking at how things might shape up toward the second half, it's been a little bit, in my opinion, at least a little bit calmer session regarding education than it was in 2023. I think the Stars Act has been pretty, pretty good. I think that'll be, once that goes through, I think that'll be good for West Valley. They've also not passed some bills that would have changed the face of education in Montana quite honestly, like in a huge, huge way. For, for example, like Senate Bill 204 with the maximum amount that levies could be and the mills that they could be and then the voting numbers that we would have needed for levies and the fact that it would have been, you know, year to year. It's been good that way, so. Yeah, I think, oh, I wanted to mention that the, one of the building projects we're going to try to do in the office area is make the two offices that were once the principals' offices into one meeting space. It won't be big enough for things like board meetings, but it should be a area that we can utilize for any other meetings that we might, might have. So Phil is currently looking into what that would entail and some of the costs associated with that. It does include some fairly difficult wall removal because there's lots of communication wires in, in the middle wall, and so that'll have to be figured out. So, yeah. Also, the accreditation piece was, was due and delivered to the state, so now we wait. Took a lot of work for, for the admin team. Then again, I, I put down some of the specifics on there. Again, it's not everything, but I think our packet was pretty close to almost a thousand pages. Way up there, some of that was repeated stuff, but it was definitely well over a ream of paper, so. Hopefully, the, the state looks at what we're doing and that we've proved that we're doing everything we should be. So, yeah.
Thank you, Richard, and I'd like to thank you too for that Friday update. I think that's, I, oh, everybody else feels, but I thought that would, I think that's great.
Yeah. Glad it's helpful. Yeah, and as things come up, I, I try to put them on there. And if you, you can access it at any time too, it doesn't have to be when I send it out, so. Yeah, if something comes up on a Wednesday even, you can head in there and look to see if there's any changes, but I'll try to share it out, you know, on purpose on Friday.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for that. Going on and to the principal's report, the grading policy. We've been looking forward to this.
Well, I, I didn't bring handouts because I think you put on the correct, yes. And I'm, I'm just gonna present this pretty informally. I think that our staff did quite a bit of work on this. We started it prior to Christmas and the group as a whole kind of discussed what we were okay with, what were pros and cons, and came up with the fact that they really wanted to make sure they were communicating to parents in a way that parents understood, and that was a little simpler than what we have been doing. But they really wanted to make sure that they could communicate the different domains of their classes. And we kind of took it from there. We met cross-subject, or subject levels met together and kind of did their non-negotiables, what kind of domains they wanted. We tried to limit them to five per subject. And then grade levels met and kind of went through that stuff and did their non-negotiables and came up with what we attached, and it's a pretty final draft that a committee met three or four times to kind of finalize together as a group because that's when we kind of took all the information. So what they decided on was a percent grading scale with pluses and minuses and letter grades. And so, and within each course, there will be domains which is on here. We really wanted a standard one, and this is the same document that you have access to. We really wanted a standard one, five through eight, but the math strands go every three years. So the fifth grade strands are not the same as six through eight. So that's why fifth grade has its own and sixth through eight has its own. And so in each course, they will get a letter grade in the domains that have been taught. So that means that if you, if your math only does geometry, you will only have geometry A. That will be the only thing on there. If your math has taught geometry and measurement in fifth grade, they will have geometry A, measurement B in those. But there won't be standards, that will just be those domains that are listed there. The second thing they really wanted was a work ethic grade in each classroom, so in each course, so that parents could see why your kid is attaining that grade. Mainly because if kids are getting Bs, but their work ethic is exemplary, then they wanted that communicated, your kid's working really hard, they're just getting a B in class. Or, you know, your student is getting a C and they're unsatisfactory, so you're missing work, that kind of thing. And that was on the second page of the document. They again tried to go, we tried to stick very simple. You get exemplary, satisfactory, unsatisfactory. And they decided on three reasons that this would be decided, timeliness, and we have definitions that are respectful and engaged. And again, going with the percent scale that the exemplary is ninety to a hundred, satisfactory is like you're seventy to eighty-nine, and unsatisfactory is below seventy. We were pretty adamant and staffed that late work had a two-week deadline per, from the due date, and then it was enough. And missing work would also be assigned enough. And kind of as a staff, one of the reasons that we felt that was pretty important is, you know, we are working towards high school and we want to make sure that kids understand that there are deadlines for those kinds of things. Absence policy stays the same, and athletic eligibility policy is based on their work at their grade. So if they have a U in any subject, they're ineligible from the Friday to the Friday. Questions or?
I just have one comment that, that people read it and somebody mentioned that maybe we, rather than calling it an F, a failing grade, you could call it the lowest grade. Just, just semantics.
I like, I like that.
Well, the F would stay there, but instead, because we have an A is the highest grade, and an F is a failing grade, or should it be the lowest grade? This was somebody.
F is a failing, yeah.
The real question is why isn't it an E?
Right? I was just, F is failing.
We're trying to be like, make it as simple as easy to, or a simple process. Someone's gonna understand an F more than they're gonna understand what was great.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay, I just thought I, I do that.
And I mean, you know, it's, if we work it next year and it's, you know, there are things we think we need to change, we can't have that next year too. I think this is, I, I, from through the process, I think that what we came up with is pretty good for everybody and, and the teachers were all on board. I mean, and I think the buy-in is important too for them, and they feel good about it, so.
Everybody was, you know, compromised, yeah.
Yeah.
And I do know why they don't have an E, I'm old. And in the old days, they used to grade E, V, G, and G. It was excellent. V and G was very good, and G was good. Oh, so just.
But Darney is throwing them, you know?
I know this is a lot of work to change, but I, I'm hopeful that it kind of re-engages parents in like understanding what their kids are, how their kids are doing in school. And so hopefully it'll be kind of like an offset, and you'll be able to kind of see some more parent engagement because you can under, you know, I'm not that old, but we can understand this and how to, like, you know, coach our kids and have expectations. The old format is difficult to really understand, you know, what your kid was doing, and I think this will be a, an improvement, hopefully improved behavior and, you know, effort, et cetera. Parents start to kind of dial in on their kids.
I would be like that, working on big grade scales, great.
Yeah.
I think it helps the kids have some incentive too to try to get better grades where like, it was almost like before they could try just as hard as someone that wasn't really trying that hard and get the same grade, you know? So this gives some incentive for like.
Yeah, and we tossed around the idea of just the letter grade, but the plus and the minus, again, it's that increment that you can just move a little bit higher in, and so we went with the plus and minus. And so we'll just, I mean, that's on the back end of Infinite Campus, so.
So will parents be able to go in and see if there's missing work on Infinite Campus? So we could go monitor and see if they're missing assignments or something, and keep track of that, that's awesome.
Yeah, and I mean, we're also looking at some scheduling changes to the schedule, and that's kind of in the process too, that will, kids will have like a flex period at the end of the day where they'll be checking their missing assignments and checking their grades with their flex teacher and that kind of thing, similar to advisory, but in a little different model, so that would be another place where kids could look at it and maybe do some parent communication too, so, yeah.
Do teachers feel like this would be an improvement for them over the current system?
Yeah, they were all, they were all on board with the hybrid. They were not, they were not game to just go with a one grade for each thing. They really wanted to be able to communicate like in, let's say, writing that it was informational writing, the student was getting an A on, they weren't okay with just the one. But they were very happy with this one, and I think, yes, they feel like parents will understand it better, and that's kind of their goal, so. Yes, no, they're, they're great with it. And again, it's very similar to this one, the system we have now where, you know, in math, you won't see all of those. You will only see the ones that's taught and graded in that trimester. So, you know, you may end up, if ELA only does argumentative writing, you may only have one grade in ELA. If they do speaking and listening and argumentative writing, you may have two for that one. It just, just depends on what the teacher puts a grade in for that trimester, yeah. So, yeah, it should be much simpler, easier to understand, kind of communication, yeah.
I like that it keeps the news of the, I guess, proficiency model too, though. I mean, that is one thing that I've appreciated growing up at an elementary level, is seeing like where my kiddos specifically struggling in those categories. But I think this hybrid model will convey things a lot better on a middle school level.
Yeah, and that was none of the other reasons, they really stuck with fifty percent as the lowest grade. So you can't take and then not be able to come, you know, back and, yeah. They had really good ideas, I mean, everyone contributed and I think it turned out very nice, so.
Well, we need to thank him.
Yeah, thank you.
Look, you can see there was a lot of work involved in this, so.
Yeah, well, we did it as a staff, they did a really good job of themselves.
Great, so thank you for the leadership in that, to Nicole.
Yes, you're welcome.
That was good.
We're excited to see how it goes. As soon as I figure out how to put it in Infinite Campus, it'll be great.
Such a massive undertaking.
That's a summer project, not a project.
Okay, anybody else have any questions on that? All right, we'll move on to the action items. The approval of the bills, which we have a copy of in right here.
Did you want to go?
I can touch on something real quick. You guys have access, I've just been creating a spreadsheet to go over like paras and their applicants and groups and all that. And so I have six weeks now in there that I updated today, and it's pretty extreme, and I'll keep showing it, but it's just, it's one of those things that I feel like it's almost like I want parents to know, like, that we, it is, it is affecting like students and how much instruction they're getting and that we, you know, really do need support and people to apply for these jobs and even our substitutes, letting them know like how important those positions are and to please sign up for jobs. I just tallied it up real quick, so over the last six weeks, we've had four hundred and twenty-three groups canceled. So it's pretty extreme, and that's not like recess duties and lunch duties, that's just like group responsibilities. So it's traumatic and it's hard, and we are definitely doing the very best we can, but our students aren't getting the interventions that we would love for them to get and that we have in place, and we have, we just need the people to do that. And so trying to be creative on how we get people in for the rest of the year, but also next year, so that we're not in this situation, is going to be really important. And we had a sub training, you know, I don't know, a month or a month and a half ago, and we've gotten a few subs which have been helpful. But we do still need to pull in paras and make this a desirable position because we need them desperately, and our students need this desperately, so, yeah.
Will you reshare that document?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
I think those are only the elementary ones.
Yeah, this is just case four.
Yeah.
Yeah, and even like looking at this, I started, I should have documented it more, but even like last week, we had, we had literally no one to give. And so first grade, one of our teachers was, had to leave unexpectedly, and I had to just split up her class. And the first grade teachers took extra kids because we didn't have anybody to do that, and they were willing, but it's not something that I want to do frequently. And it's not, it's just not good. And I know Nicole struggles with the same thing, and she's been subbing in classrooms a lot, which it, it's hard when it takes away from like the admin responsibilities that need to get done when you're just filling in and, you know, trying to survive essentially. It's, it's hard.
I know you had applicants for paras, did anybody get hired out as an applicant?
Yes, we hired one, and so we're waiting for the background check. She's been here and has been just kind of shadowing and working on testing students and having Todd work with her until we get that background check and board approval and things. And then we offered the permission to another applicant and she turned it down partially because of the money, got a better offer. And then, yeah, that was pretty much, pretty much it in the pool, so. But we were lucky to get Katie Benman, she's great and has been, it's, it's a huge blessing to have one more person. It does help tremendously, and once we get her background check and she can start really diving in and helping, it'll be, it'll be helpful.
Is this, have we tried other intervention models in the past? Like I know sometimes things have been computer-based, at least in other schools. Is this the best, most effective way, or have we looked at perhaps like different strategies for interventions?
Yeah, and that's part of it. I'll just speak on like the second grade team is trying to be innovative this year and getting kind of a double dose so that if one of the intervention groups with the paras is canceled, they're trying to have that additional like solid intervention that they're working out within their grade level. And so we've talked about potentially trying to do that with other grade levels next year so that at least they're getting something, and it's not necessarily the, you know, intervention curriculum that we're using with paras, but at least it's structured to target what their needs are and, you know, is using something that's beneficial. And Sarah Maudius, she teaches that group, that intervention group in second grade, and we have seen broke there. So that is definitely something that we're thinking about trying to figure out how to make that happen next year for more grade levels, just help kids continue to grow when these things happen. But the small group interventions, I mean, when they're happening, they're great, you know, in the years past when they were up and running and doing great, those kids that are really struggling the smaller groups and that, you know, more one-on-one has proven to be really successful. So it's hard to get rid of that and go to like a computer-based thing or anything like that when we know this works, we just need to have the people to do it. But we are trying to be creative in figuring out how to go forward for next year.
Yeah, yeah, I, and I, my kid was one of those, right? Like, I mean, we're a kindergarten teacher, and we know where he started, and the growth that we saw through those interventions was massive, absolutely massive. I think my only concern is, we're, and we're trying to work on stuff on our end and try to help out with that, but you know, it's other potentially other things, so that's exciting where.
Yeah, I think for us, we're looking at a thirty-minute block at the end of the day. That would be more of a flex period where kids could go get help from the math teacher. Grade levels have talked about specifically in math and oral reading fluency, doing pinpointed like groups within the actual teachers. I mean, on our end, our paras end up subbing, you know, we had three openings that weren't filled today, so you have one, you know, and then another goes, and then you only have two people out on duty, and so that's just kind of where we're at. But that's kind of what we are trying to look at a little bit because we, and it's different from elementary. We don't really have a place for those small groups interventions once they get to some of the eighth grade because we're pulling them out of like classes, so we're just kind of trying to find a different way to do it, yeah.
Just want to share that information.
Thank you. Thank you. Hopefully, we can come up with, it's hard to find people.
Well, I watched Julie walk up four times today and then. If you need some tips on that, I could give it. Because I wasn't gonna do choir for Miss Ham.
That's who we watched today.
Is there anything else on that? I appreciate your position there, you know? Hopefully, we can make something work.
Yeah, we were there before, so there's, there's hope we can get there again.
And you know, I, I'd like to think, you know, we're not unique in, in the problem. I mean, absolutely, can't say, well, West Valley's the only school without a shortage of pairs, I don't think.
Oh, and a shortage of subs, it's chronic throughout the valley, I mean, it's so bad.
So we can't, I mean, it, it's a hard position to be in, but we're not, we're not alone there.
For sure.
Got to make us feel a little bit better. Thank you, go on to the action items then, I mean, approval of the, of the bills. What's the facilities improvement operation?
That's FICO.
Oh, okay. We used to see in FICO, very thing.
Yeah.
Thanks for making a note on the interloper.
Is standing downing, is that?
The auditor's starting?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And that still is a yearly thing?
Yes.
Because wasn't there talk of moving that to like every other year or every three years or something like that?
I don't know, to be honest, I know that it's been every year for a very long time.
I think the federal one is every three years, but only that's what I'm thinking of.
Make a motion to approve the bills.
I'm seconded.
Katie, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the bills? I opposed. You know, see, the next action item is the Human Resources Personality Report that Maggie put together for us, so we know exactly where we're going with that. Unfortunately, but.
Basically, what's on here for the month is the resignation of long-term sub for Haley Blanchard. We have a hiring of our paraprofessional, Caitlin Benman, and then our head, our cross-country coaches. Hiring of those.
And the resignation of the long-term sub is because Haley's coming back, or?
Ms. Wade isn't there until Haley will be back on April fourteenth.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the West Valley Personnel Activity Report. I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
I agree.
Opposed, unanimous. Go on to the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six permissive levy resolution, which we have in front of this here. Maggie, would you explain that a little bit?
Sure, well, I had to wait until I got the preliminary budget numbers from OPI, and then you, you start plugging them into this very cumbersome spreadsheet put out by Masbo and, and, I guess it's Masbo. And then, so the only thing that we are required by law to report on the permissive levy resolution is the transportation, bus depreciation, tuition, adult ed, technology flexibility, and building reserve permissive. After watching several webinars between both Masbo and MTSBA, for transparency, they recommend adding the one, like the general, like I've done, and the other ones, just so that people know that there will be changes, and these are not set in stone. These are just, what you have to do is you have to guesstimate what you think it's going to be. And they can change one way or the other, other, like if something comes, like if something unforeseen comes in in the tuition bill over the summer, we can adjust it. We just have to bylaw, letting them know that there will be some sort of increase or decrease in these funds. But they recommend, just for transparency, that you put them all in because someone may come back to you. Someone may come back to you and say, well, hey, you only advertise these, not understanding that bylaw you don't have to advertise the other ones. And so you're leaving yourself open for some discussion. And if you only take those, those limited funds. And really the general fund is where a lot of movement happens and then all of a sudden. It's a lot more than what they thought they saw. And so once this is signed and done, we send it to the paper and, oh no, I guess this one just has to be posted around the school. And then you have to talk about. You know, looking up. Because really the permissive levies all started. When it, talking about major maintenance and then these other. Accounts of, or these other funds have kind of rolled into that as well. And, and obviously these are ones that we don't have to go out for a vote for and these are. So that's basically what this is.
Make a motion to approve this, will your twenty-five, twenty-six permissive levy resolution?
A second.
Is there any discretion? All those in favor? The unanimous. The approval of Montana Digital Privacy Agreement for Generation Genius. Now we have a. We have a. Copy that. In our, in our agenda minutes or agenda, I just wondered about that, but Maggie's not really.
We try, I tried to get, because I, I get, Kat sends them to me and then. So I reached back out to her and said, well, what is this? Because I'm sure that the board's gonna want to know what this is and. And she said it actually wasn't hers, it's something that she just facilitates and so she tried to reach out to Tanya and I have not heard back from Tanya, neither one of us have. And I, basically anytime we have to do an NDA, it's because. Of sensitive student information, isn't it?
It's just so that, it's a guarantee that the company will not share data on kids under thirteen years old. So, and this is a math and science video company. So it's. Going to be used for academics and stuff, so since we have kids who are under thirteen using it, we have to do, Montana Law says we have to do a DPA with them.
And Kat has told me that there will be several between now and June that we have to sign for the next school year, so.
Yeah, we get these.
Yeah, so I'm, I'll try to get what they are so we can just have an idea.
So we feel comfortable with going ahead and voting on this.
So we know it's not like TikTok or.
Bring the tickety-talk to school.
I'll make a motion to approve the. Digital privacy agreement for Generation Gen- Genius.
A second.
Is there any further discussion on that? All is in favor? Opposed? The unanimous. That the go on to. Even approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six academic. Which I think. A lot of people have been. Spending hard on. Richard, you said that it was the, the main. Where recesses. Coincide with school district five, right, the main. But, but maybe some, some of the other.
Yeah, there's days here and there, P I R days here and there that don't.
And there would be a change that there will be no late Friday. Fridays, that'll be one of the changes.
And in lieu of that, we don't have to start until September.
That's right, yes, yeah. First day of school for kids would be, looks like September third.
Were the early start. It wasn't that for like collaboration and all of that stuff.
Yeah, the late starts were for collaboration.
Or sorry, yeah.
We're, we're getting that in.
Yes, to the schedule in a, in a different way.
Didn't they start during COVID to have extra time between or something or?
No, they started my first year here, which would have been twenty seventeen. And the idea was for, for PLCs to, to happen at a time that was. You know, I, I truly don't know why they were created at that time. We can do it and I know the principals have been working on schedules that allow it to happen at a different time, so we chose to do it that way rather than. You know, to have these late starts on a Friday, if we can do it a different way, we thought it would be. Better to do it that way.
And it sounded like absences and stuff were significantly up on Fridays, or maybe partly due to late start.
Yeah, and.
Or tardies.
Tardies are the huge piece the office deals with and struggles with on Fridays.
Oh man, even that mine, you can just see it on Fridays.
There's more tardies on late start Friday than there is the rest of the week.
Yeah, that's funny.
Just because we have the cars.
And no, it's literally, I'm like the best laid plans and then there's like just human nature and it blows all the plans up. Looking like we're having fewer P I R days during the school year.
It's the same amount of P I R days total, because we have to, that, that's an MCA thing we have to.
Right.
So.
The less built into like in the spring, it was usually, I think. More like one a month or something.
Yeah, we typically, we try to. Not do as many P I Rs. Later in the year, we try to keep it more toward the beginning before, we usually. Do two or three before kids show up and then. We recent, well, not even recently anymore, I've started to do around Halloween, like the day after Halloween is a P I R day. For teachers, which has been phenomenally successful. For us and then the sixteenth and seventeenth is usually around where it falls. In descent, in October, our M E A days for, for Montana. It's like a statewide P I R where it's a conference.
That counts as our P A. It counts for our, our hours.
It does, yes.
Oh, this is beautiful.
Calendar is great. So like that March thirteenth with that early, when we set one, I know like, for example, next week we're doing two days, is that like you're in queue conferences then on one day?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, yeah, and then as an as-needed basis too. In the spring. Yeah, calendar committee met several times, I know Mark was part of that too on the.
You're telling me this is where Mark.
I think the big change though too was going by hours versus days. That helped, that gives a lot of flexibility.
Yeah, so that's right now being negotiated with the teachers' union too and so. Bea and, and company are on, on that for us and she, on Friday, she sent us a. Basically a list of things that we have to do in order for it to. Satisfy MCA, so we're, we're gonna do that too. Negotiations, so it's been extremely helpful to have her involved in that process too.
And this calendar would be contingent on that.
Yeah, there's no reason to say that, because it, it, it will happen.
Yeah.
We just have to, in our negotiations, change a few things and. I gave a copy of that to, to the negotiation team from the union and. So it'll be a, just a. Couple changes here and there, so it's a part of that package too that. That you've seen already with that, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendar.
I'll second.
Yeah, is there any further discussion? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Takes a lot of time to come up with something like that. So we appreciate that. Thank you, Mark. All of, any, any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, unanimous. And we're.
Second.
Any discussion? All of in favor?